You had mentioned that you were here once before for the same project or not?
Well, I didn't know how it would all work when I came in a couple of months back. Let's see if it would be doable at all and advise me to get the map going up and come back.
Okay, so in October of 2022, Mr. Brace was here.
Yep.
And at that time, lot line change, the accessibility and plot. We needed an updated map and an application. And basically, I think it was the board's intention to refer it to the assessor. So I don't know whether he has, literally, he's completed an application. That might be required to be signed. Otherwise, this is the updated map. So ordinarily, it certainly appears that he's not going to run afoul of any setback issues. So there shouldn't be any issues with regard to the lot line change. He's basically moving his one side on the bottom right, if you're looking at it through the corner. The block on the bottom right. He's moving the proposed property line from where the original was in approximately, it's like maybe fifty feet. By doing that, they give themselves a flat lot on the sixteen point one seventy parcel. Setbacks on the resulting smaller parcel, four acres, are adequate in the zoning. So essentially, if the board wishes it could waive a public hearing, defer the matter to the assessor, Mr. Brace would have to file an application with the planning board. And likely, he would have to provide me with proposed descriptions for the three deeds. One meets and bounds description for the parcel to be conveyed. And then resulting meets and bounds descriptions for the four acre lot and the sixteen point one seventy acre lot.
I believe I have the proposed.
Well, just a question. I can see that the fifty one or fifty foot wide right of way that's proposed is, is that it's not necessarily moving that lot line that's to the right, to the left, create that, he's actually adding another line to the map, correct?
Say it.
The right of way is, there's already an existing. Well, this is, but it says, no, this is proposed.
Right, I think this goes.
So originally, originally, it was two lines. This was one. This was a straight line. This still didn't need these. So now this becomes the resulting line.
But this is the existing line.
This is an existing line, you will notice.
Yeah, this one line, that's the existing problem.
But we're actually adding this line. Correct. So we created a right of way. Wow.
So dividing is not a right of way. Yeah, but out of, out of the. Yeah, he's basically just moving this line this way, just taking this and moving this line.
So L seven was the existing property line.
Agreed. Okay, yeah, we're unsure how that.
Yes.
We understand.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Didn't know if you're looking for like a right of way or if not, you actually pick the piece of property off.
Creating a flag lot.
Correct.
For the larger piece, which.
Right. Well, I don't know. As far as the proper theory is concerned, I don't think we need to hold one for just a lot more change. It's necessary to eliminate that piece of a lot more, that's all. So we have a motion to not hold a public hearing, the application.
Boy, we, is there an application?
I don't know. I think they say we could actually both have tonight.
I, I believe that you could do that tonight and refer it to the assessor on a condition that he comply with a meets and bounds description and a complete application.
Yeah, because we can't staff the map or all the names. Have to be.
On second.
Correct, second, on favor.
Yes, good.
Yes, and then we just need to, to confirm to the town assessor for the lot line change.
I'll make a motion on second.
On better?
Wait. Want to make that condition upon your attorney, where you have the deeds?
Okay, but yeah. Needs and bounds. Okay, all right.
My yes.
Yeah. All right, we're good.
There you are.
If I have those meets and bounds, like.
Do you want?
You don't need them tonight.
I don't need them tonight. Do you know who you're going to use as your attorney for the deeds?
No, I do not.
Okay, well, once you figure out who that is, they'll prepare the deeds. Just have them send them, or you can bring them to me for review. I'll notify the town that they're going to do that, and then you just see the assessment. You'll have to file a MyLor, which is like a plastic map. It gets signed by the planning board chairman. Take the map and the MyLor, the maps and the MyLor to Orange County Planning. They'll do what they need to do, and then they'll notify the assessor that the lots are changed. You can get new section lots and lots.
Sounds like a lot that you're consulting remote, I guess.
Yeah.
You answered all my questions.
Yes, I did.
Or a minute, yeah. Your consult for a minute.
Ari.
Thanks.
Make your.
Thank you, Mr. President. My pleasure.
I'm going to keep that for your trial.
You want that?
Well, you have to bring back the map anyway, the MyLor, the checking map. When he comes back, for those I need, well, he has to sign up. So he has to stand with my or his alibi, and then we also need one for our final and appropriate. So when you come back for those, and then that one that they offer, and then I'll have the first.
So I get the MyLor. So is that.
Sure. All right, thank you. All right, second agenda is A Farm Road. This is, they were here once before. This is the second pre-app. How are you? Good, how are you doing? Stay in here for record, please.
Joseph Hallman.
All right, Joseph. Well, they came back because they had a question about the alley access.
Right, there was a question about whether or not it was permitted. And frankly, that was because there was a concern about what zone it was in. So we've confirmed that property is in the HMU zone. It isn't when they use. So as far as the pre, I mean, technically, it's a site plan change. So they should come in for a site plan approval. But at this point, we can say to them that as long as it needs a setback requirement, which I'm sure, well, based on where it places, it should receive permission.
Yeah, just have a new site plan.
Right. The last time he was here, we weren't sure whether he'd have to go to ZVA or come back here. Because we weren't sure what zone he was in. Now we're sure he can come back.
Yeah, go ZVA, just prepare the new site plan, your proposal. And submit that with an application.
Okay. That's it?
What we got? Thank you, Arisa, thank you. Deer Park Village, Wilson Road, need a application extension?
Well, we need to ask for one.
Oh, I'm sorry. You guys asked for one?
Yes.
Yeah, just. One more thing, sorry.
Are you looking to do us?
Uh, there's a.
The park lot, yes.
For sale.
They're going to live in it for use.
People good.
Yes. Yeah, it's for their use on their property, for them.
So I think he needs to show us where they're using something like that.
Now we're done with you. All right, nature. Uh, number three is Deer Park Bill, Wilson Road, extension?
Good evening.
Where's the microphone? We can hear you.
Oh, you can't.
Speak up, because we often can't.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Potzky, John. We are here a couple of months earlier because the past four months, we were engaged in kind of a very nasty lab affair with our lender. Caused a lot of problems. It was going to extend the loan and increase it, so we completed the site approval process. So after he was playing with us, actually, this is another word that is struggling to eat my mouth right now, but, you know, I can't. And after two and a half months, they decided to say that they want to get paid off because they want to, you know, proceed with that, the more profitable, you know, investments after the interest rates were out. So we had to run a new appraisal. We had to engage in the funding with lender because we were trying to avoid that because we now have to pay all the costs of course again. So as you can understand, this has been a massive damage. We actually did nothing in the last four months except for playing around with the lenders. So we proceeded, got the new appraisal, and we're ready to proceed with it. Lenders choose one of the two, but because they are going, we're looking to close this in the next three weeks before you have your next meeting. So we came earlier and they're going to need the extension. It's seen that it's there. So if we get it now, in a couple of weeks, we're going to get the minutes. It's going to be pretty satisfying to them. So this is why we're here, basically, a month, month and a half earlier.
I have to defer to Glenn on this. I know you have one extension already for six months, but this extension is going to kind of overlap that previous extension, correct?
We got more than one six month extension.
Yeah, one year.
The last extension was going through November eighth.
Yes.
So the question, or November eighth or November eighth? November eighth, I think, or seventh, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. So the board could consider, based on the presentation and the rationale, requiring the extension, to grant another six month extension, which could either go to May eighth, or if made it six months from now, it would be March. Frankly, given the size of this application, the number of hoops that they have to run through, I don't have any particular objection saying they should meet May. The first meeting in May, I'll have a date for you about thirty seconds.
It's actually, it's actually the eighth.
May?
It is May eighth.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I guess we can make a motion to, for the extension until May two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Well, second, on favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Crazy times, we just, that's all I can tell you. Sure, sweet, so. All right, then, Ford, this IP Solar, Maple Crest, the revision of site plan discussion.
Good evening. Warren Rosenthal with IP Solar. So the reason why we're here today is we wanted to talk about requesting essentially a waiver, if you will, of requirement to fence the entire solar project. I think it originally was part of the site plan approved. And the reason for that is, as you probably are aware, the project is not visible to really anybody or anyone based on where it's situated. And so the only purpose for doing the fence would be for security reasons, but given where it's located, we're not too concerned about security. There are some minimum requirements that the state does have for, which we'll take care of, but it won't require an actual complete fence around the project. So that's essentially what we're here today. So I guess kind of open for discussion.
Yeah, what's that minimum requirement that the state does?
Uh, it has to do with some kind of, in this case, because it's fixed panels, they don't rotate, even some kind of netting, I think, that you can put on there. I'm not really exactly familiar with it, but Mazir, the one, the principal firm indicated to me that that would meet the state's requirement. But it's not necessary per se to have a big fence around the entire project. So that's the reason why we're here today.
I just get deferred up just now. Is that something in our zoning or a solar law that we need a fence?
Yeah, so in the solar code, I mean, one of the, I think the last revision in there indicates that it should, the project should not be visible to neighbors or to the public to the extent possible. Effectively, I mean, I can't read the exact words, but that's effectively what it says.
But for, it's for safety reasons, it's a river corridor. Do you know where's boaters, people up and down the river? Or is that something that is a safety issue that somebody, God forbid, can come off the river and walk up into the solar field? Pause for electrocution or something, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, access, I mean, you'd have to really make an extraordinary effort because, you know, the banks are very steep, and I mean, somebody would really have to go out of their way to do that. And honestly, even if somebody was to wander in there, I mean, it's not really dangerous unless you start doing something stupid, which, again, I mean, you can't prevent stupidity, as you all know. People will do what they want to do. Even with a fence up, if somebody really is determined, they could either go over the fence or they cut the fence, or they could knock the fence down. I mean, you know, how far do you want to go, I mean, when it comes to security? So again, we're pretty comfortable with that location as far as, you know, people having access to it readily. Again, if somebody is really determined to do something, then, you know, you're not going to stop them.
I can see the practicality to what you're proposing, but I, I don't know what the legally what this is. So again, I'll have to defer back to you, our council, to see what you think.
Is there a security surveillance?
There will be, and there will be gates at all of the entrances. So, you know, so somebody will not be able to drive past those gates again.
So let me ask you this question. You mentioned gates. If there's going to be a fenced line or if there's going to be a gate, is there going to be a fence line attached to the gate? Are you looking for to eliminate all the fence or it's part of the?
There's pinch points, so that the gates are located where the, where the access road is, the by road. So it's at both ends. So you can't really, you know, be bowlers, you know, so you won't be able to get around them, tweak the gates.
So you're proposing eliminate the fence for the entire project?
Exactly. Now, I guess what we're saying is we'd like to keep it discretionary. So that if we don't need to put the fence up, we won't. But if for some reason we do, then obviously we'll put it up. So I think that's kind of a position that we'd like to take. Again, assuming that the code.
Is it a cost effectiveness of the fence? Is it the cost of the fence?
Well, I mean, there's different kinds of fences. Some are obviously a lot more expensive than others. I mean, certainly, it's not, it's not, it's not a, any fence is not inexpensive these days, as you know.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so if we could save ourselves that cost, that certainly would be preferable. But, uh, I, you know, I mean, as you know, you've probably seen a lot of solar projects. The ones that are like right on the main drag typically do have our fence. They have like, you know, some kind of chamber of fence. But again, those are ones that are visible to the public. This, again, is not anything anybody's going to see. Public won't even know it's there. Like you said, the only person that might know it if they're, if they're floating down the river, they might see it. But again, they have to make an extraordinary effort to.
Let me be honest with you, I've never been in a solar farm or solar facility that didn't have a fence. I don't, I, every, I've been in a lot of them. I've never been in a solar farm that did not have, of some sort.
Yeah, yeah.
Of some sort. So if somebody was walking through the woods, quad riding up there, blood trail, and they went on the property, they bumped their head on one of your solars, or, you know, it's, whose fault is that? I mean, obviously, they're trespassing, but they're like, well, you didn't have a fence around.
I mean, that's why you carry liability insurance. I mean, I, you know, the, you know, just hypothetically. No, but that's, I mean, not, not being facetious, but that's, and that's why you carry a lot of insurance to account for people that do dumb things.
Is there a security camera that watches that, you know, the site?
There will be, there will be cameras at different locations that will, you know. I mean, we're not going to go into the details of that. So there will be security.
So there will be security, I was.
Yeah.
We're doing a Google first.
I mean, I've got some visuals, again, if you want to see. I mean, this is what the area looks like. Again, there's no, nobody can see it from the road. There's only one neighbor here that's next to the project, and there's going to be trees that are going to be planted between the solar system and his house so that he won't even see it once those trees are there. So effectively, it's, it's kind of invisible unless you're up in an airplane or you're flying a drone.
I'm not too concerned about visibility, I'm more concerned about public safety.
Yeah, that's the first one I've ever heard of.
So, so I can't, I can't find that, I fingered it, not knowing that this was the reason that it's going to be objected to me. I can't find something that specifically requires it. However, in a related section of the zoning law where it talks about, and this is for telecommunication, telecommunications towers and the like, they actually do require fencing and access to all structures through a lock gate or a principal building. Fences, fences have to have appropriate anti-climbing devices and things of that nature. Candidly, based upon all of the public areas that I've been involved in, related to solar facilities, it's always been my understanding that there was a requirement of a fence. And in fact, more often than not, if anything, they had to be sent to the ZVA because the fence height requirement on solar facilities was higher than the town allowed. Town allowed six feet. Most of the solar facilities, as you're proposing, seven foot, plus or minus a barbed wire top. So I know that Deer Park actually changed its laws to allow for fencing around solar facilities that could be as high as eight feet, specifically because of that requirement from the, I think, whatever the federal regulation organization is. Yeah, FERC. So if the applicant has documentation that shows that fencing is not required by FERC, or if the board wishes, I can, you know, we can put it over for two weeks and I can try to do more specific research relative to the town Deer Park law. But I'm not prepared to give you guidance that it's not required as he.
All right, well, I would, I would say that if our home is safe, and here's also that we just defer, or like Glenn doing the research, and we can go review this back again in two weeks. Two weeks is enough time?
I think so, yeah. You need to make that into a motion, or we just?
No, just tell him to come back in two weeks, and then we'll have a chat. If you have documentation that you can show me that says that, you know, FERC doesn't require it, that would be helpful.
Okay, okay. Probably won't see me, you'll probably see Mazir.
That's okay, well, whatever.
We'll, we'll send somebody, yeah, we can come back.
They can correspond with you electronically? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he can, yeah, he can correspond directly. Okay, great, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
We appreciate it, thank you for coming. All right, number five on the agenda is Golden Basin, four four three Route two oh nine, site plan review? Yeah? Just put her off, she's a little trouble. Uh, number six, New Century, five seventeen Never Saint Drive, site plan review?
All right, Alvin, speak up. I can call today. Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ryan Felonzer, Felonzer Engineering, representing New Century Film at five seventeen Never Saint Drive. We are here tonight, and to do it, based on our meeting that we had last, for discussion. I just wanted to note that we made a response to Mr. Fusco's response, our comment letter that he gave us at the last meeting. Attached a bunch of supporting documentation and information that he was looking for. And if there's any questions on that, we can review.
Yeah, I just had one question. I think I read the email, the thirty-five page SWP that was submitted on the, on the twenty-second. Do you guys have time to review that?
Yes. You talking about the engineer's report?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can sure you got through that. I'm sorry, Google. Yeah, um, just following up, we gave a response letter to the August twenty-second memo, which had a lot of SWP information, the submission to the county planning, which we provided a copy of. And we also responded to the memo from the Department of Public Works. So I provided a copy to Mr. Fusco's office for that as well, which you had requested. And I believe that that was it. So here to answer any questions that the board has on that submission.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, a couple of meetings ago, the board had requested a written list of conditions that might be imposed relative to approval. So there are basically two additional steps that have to be taken. One has to do with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The board on August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, did a review of the information presented. At that time, it was determined that this was a type one action. And the board, after a careful review, verbally issued a negative declaration. There has now been prepared a written resolution that codifies and documents that resolution on a motion from Ms. Santiago, seconded by Mr. Whitney, that there be a negative declaration. So I've reviewed that proposed resolution. I've made a couple of grammatical changes. We're going to have that redrafted, filling in the blanks, making grammatical changes, at which point, Mr. Vicaretti, I believe it is ready for your signature.
Sure.
There was also a discussion, I believe it was also at the August ninth meeting, about possibility and likelihood of approving the application with conditions. So at this juncture, there is a proposed resolution for site plan approval that I believe the board has been provided with in writing. And it reads as follows, resolution for site plan approval. The town of Deer Park, New York Planning Board hereby approve site plan for New Century Film as required by the State Environmental Quality Review Act six, NYCRR, Part six seventeen. Name of action, New Century Film Site Plan. Location, five seventeen Never Saint Drive, Section fifty, Block one, Lot thirty-eight point two three. Zone, HMU, Hamlet, Mexius. Project, New Century Film Site Plan. Action, Type one. Documents available at town hall are available by foil request reviewing. Whereas the applicant, New Century Film, is proposing improvements to their existing site located at five seventeen Never Saint Drive in the town of Deer Park, New York, Lot fifty dash one dash thirty-eight point two three, approximately forty acres within the HMU district of Hamlet, Mexius. And whereas, existing site features include a large horse show arena, barns and stables, two residential dwellings, an underground rifle and pistol range, and asphalt parking. The site is bordered by the Never Saint River to the south and the New York State Route two oh nine to the north. The property is currently approved for the following uses. A residential, original to site. B two, multi-perth plus building for film studio related activities approved in two thousand seventeen. B two offices approved in two thousand seventeen. E flea market vendor area with temporary parking approved in two thousand eighteen. B one, twenty-two room hotel, retail store and restaurant approved in two thousand twenty-one. B three barn, original to site. And I believe that the labels, the letters that are reciting, are referred to their location on the site plan map. The proposed site plan consists of A, residential, original to site. B one, eight-room hotel, retail store and restaurant approved in two thousand twenty-one. B two, multipurpose building to now include a film screening hall. B three, eighty-five room hotel and costume workshop with use of existing subterranean shooting range. B four, restaurants, new construction. Film stu-, C, film studios, new construction. D, wastewater treatment plant, new construction. E, flea market vendor area with temporary park, parking approved in two thousand eighteen. And whereas, the planning board held a public hearing on April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas, the planning board issued a negative declaration under SECR on August nine, two thousand twenty-three. They resolved that the planning board of the Town of Deer Park hereby grants conditional site plan approval of the New Century Film Site Plan prepared by Felonzer Engineering revised March eight, twenty-three, subject to the following conditions. These are the conditions that the board specifically requested at that August ninth meeting. And actually, there also is modified based upon the submission from DOT that came in right after the last meeting. One, provide a stormwater speedies coverage letter for construction activities from the New York State DEC, and New York State Professional Engineer is to submit weekly SWIP reports to the town engineer. Two, provide an approval letter and speedies permit from the New York State DEC for the construction of a wastewater treatment plant of approximately fifty thousand gallons per day. Bonding for this facility will be determined prior to the signing of the site plan maps. Three, provide an approval letter from the New York State Department of Health for the construction of the new wells and water system to provide upgraded service to the new development of the approximately fifty thousand gallons per day. Bonding for these improvements will be determined prior to the signing of the site plan maps. Four, modify the site plan to incorporate a left-turning lane as required by New York State DOT. Obtain approval for these improvements from the New York State DOT. Bonding for these improvements will be determined prior to the signing of the site plan maps. Five, site plans shall be modified to include a parking garage to supplement existing parking, such that there will be a total of one thousand three hundred twenty-nine spaces on site as needed. Six, compliance with the Orange County Department of Planning Letter dated May two, two thousand twenty-three. Seven, compliance with the Orange County Department of Public Works Letter dated September eight, two thousand twenty-three. Eight, the landscaping bond shall be secured based upon the landscaping cost estimate. Nine, payment of all outstanding fees. Ten, an escrow account for inspections of SWIP and other public improvements. Those are the conditions that have been discussed and that have been identified by your engineer and attorney. If the board is so inclined at this juncture, having completed a environmental review process, we can consider a conditional approval.
Any questions from the board?
No. These are the issues.
Only one, it's all we got, so it's pretty cut and dry as far as, uh, anything else from you, Tom, or?
No.
No?
These permits have to be secured before this project can officially be.
Yeah, there's a lot of work still left, obviously. Ten conditions.
Absolutely.
And some of these are pretty major conditions, not something.
I mean, basically, just so the board's familiar and to accept that anybody in the public is listening. With regard to the bond estimates, our engineer will work with their consultants to determine an appropriate dollar amount that is likely cost to, um, provide those improvements. That number is then adjusted upwards to adjust for inflation over time. And then the mechanism for providing the bond is determined between the town, well, the town board ultimately approves it. But basically, their attorney and, and I will work out the details for the bonds.
Sounds appropriate. So with that and, um, the, uh, resolution for the negative deck, that's done.
That's done.
So we can, um, we can, uh, have a, do a motion tonight to set the, uh, the site plan, conditional site plan approval verbiage that's on this resolution.
Seconded?
On favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes. And yes, so then that's, um, that's your conditional proof there.
Well, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure dealing with the board.
Yeah, well, we look forward to seeing you again, so.
Oh, I, I'm.
Where?
We'll see you.
We'll see you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Anybody show for Golden Basin? No? Okay. Well, the last thing we have to do is the approval amendment from August twenty-seventh. I did actually read it myself, they look, they look, uh, approval for me, so we need a motion to approve the August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. On favor?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
And I'd also like to acknowledge and thank our town attorney for reading through that. The crystal resolutions, you did a fine job with that.
Yes.
Better than I, but it did, that's for sure.
Good reader.
Yeah.
That's why I paid the money. I'm rooting for you.
Yeah, anything else? Anything else quick for the cause? Anything else important? Whether it's an alma or anything, you guys are joining? Looking better than I am. Is it right? Good, brings me flowers. And John, you good? Mr. Dean, sir?
All good.
Mr. Shaw? Move together. All right, well, if that's the case, we'll bring you over to Mrs. Santiago.
Make a motion to your chair.
Seconded.
On favor?
Yes.
And yes. Thanks again. Right? That's a lot of work, right? That's nice.
Somebody's got a new file.
How we doing?